Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you are so inclined, please feel free to join us in a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Board, I welcome all members of the audience to this evening's meeting. This meeting is a working session of the Board to conduct the business of the district. The agenda for today's meeting has been published, and the agenda items to be discussed and/or voted on have been studied by the Board members. I'd like to introduce you to the people participating in the meeting. Recording Secretary Peggy King, Superintendent Mr. Michael Tully, Board Members Bob Swain, Amy Cast, Sandy Hayes, and David Cogan. I'm Jack Willen McGurty, and I currently serve as President of the Board. An agenda for this meeting is available online at boarddocs.com, and copies are also located on the table at the back of the boardroom. There will be an opportunity for both virtual and in-person public comments to be shared during the Association and Public Comment portion of the meeting. Community members who are interested in viewing the meeting with closed captions are encouraged to follow the link on our website to the district's YouTube channel. The YouTube stream includes closed captioning for both regular Board meetings and study sessions. Visit nsd.org, and under "Our District", click "School Board", then "Board Meeting Materials and Videos". If you are here to address the Board on Agenda Items, please sign in using the sign-in sheet on the table at the back of the room, and take a number which corresponds with the line where you signed in. First order of business tonight is our Land Acknowledgement. Is there someone who would like to volunteer to read the Land Acknowledgement?
Not it. There you go. Let's see here. "We take this time to acknowledge that the North Shore School District occupies the unceded coast's salish lands that have been here since time immemorial. We honor the ways of knowing and ways of being of indigenous peoples and tribal nations who are still here and thriving in our district community. We also acknowledge that this is a working land acknowledgement that will continue to evolve as our partnership with local indigenous peoples and tribal leaders expands."
Thank you, Director Swain. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would Board members like to make any changes to the agenda as it has been published? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as published? So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, and I will call for vote. And the agenda has been approved unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent Mr. Michael Tully's report. Superintendent Tully.
Thank you, President McGurty. I just want to give brief updates about our efforts to continue to prepare for the start of school, which is next week's Wednesday, the first day of school, next week Wednesday, August 31st. Some of the examples of the work that's going on is during the week of August 8th, we had all of our novice teachers come in and we provided them trainings. I had an opportunity to meet with them. It was an exciting group, very ready to get started. There was the Back to School Fair at Popkinney Stadium on the evening of August 11th. A couple of Board members attended that. Last week, our educators participated in five days of what we refer to as the Summer Institute. We actually had over 1,600 registrations for 44 different, unique sessions last week. The Summer Institute gives professional development opportunities for staff, again, to prepare them with the tools and supports necessary to have a successful 22-23 school year. Also, I had an opportunity to meet with our bus drivers, all of them, last week Thursday, and all of our custonians last week Friday. Very excited, extremely excited about getting the school year started. I talked to them about their roles in supporting our students and how important that is. I believe, yeah, tomorrow I'll be meeting with our food service staff, and basically helping them and working with them as well, to share how it is important their role is in supporting our students and making sure we're prepared for the next school year as well. Also, as you may know, tomorrow our instructional staff will all return to their buildings, and on Wednesday they will be participating in professional development at the elementary level in the science of reading, and at the secondary level in a sheltered instruction/observation protocol known as PSYOP, training at the secondary level and helping prepare all of our staff on improving reading outcome, ability for our students to read, and working with our students at the secondary level who are still learning the English language within the PSYOP training. I would also like to mention, last week I had, along with a number of School Board members and all of the Assistant Superintendents, an opportunity to attend the District, North Shore School District, Wall of Honor Ceremony. Eight individuals were inducted into the Wall of Honor. Of course, this is where alumni, staff, and volunteers are recognized for their significant achievements and outstanding contributions, not only in North Shore, in many cases, the world at large. So that was a tremendous opportunity to interact with the community and recognize those individuals. And I guess finally, as you know, yesterday was the Community Serve Day. So we had over 2,000 volunteers working in 25 of our schools and preparing schools for the 22-23 school year. I mean, we had families and students, teachers, and community members working in classrooms, getting them set up, working outside our buildings on our campuses, preparing the grounds, just making improvements all over. I was able to observe painting going on at Crystal Springs. I helped, you know, worked with the music teacher. Of course, my wife's a music teacher. I had to go help the music teacher at Kenmore, get her classroom set up, and so on. So it's just exciting to see everybody, and let's get ready for next week, and we're into that mode right now. And of course, today we had an opportunity to welcome this morning all of our new staff to the North Shore School District earlier this morning. So thank you for the Board members that were able to attend that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Tully. Because I think everybody's excited for school to start up again, very soon, very soon. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Association and Public Comments. The North Shore School District Board of Directors has set aside a period of up to 60 minutes to receive updates and comments from Association leaders and community members. The Board expects all parties addressing the Board to present their comments in a way that is civil and respectful. Please speak directly to the Board and address matters related to district operations, policies, procedures, and agenda items under consideration by the Board. Comments should not make reference to any employee or representative of the district by name or by identifiable reference. There is a complaint process available through the Office of the Superintendent if interested. Washington state law requires that only items on a previously published agenda be discussed at a Board meeting. Any new topics brought up during public comment will either receive a later response from a district employee or a Board member, or be discussed at a future Board meeting. And as just a reminder, this generally means that when public comments are given during a Board meeting, the Board is not interacting with the person who is making comments. We will be discussing certain topics later in the agenda, but this is not a time for discussion. Okay, I believe we have two virtual commenters tonight. And I've lost their names. Do we have the list of... Yes, please. Okay, I heard the first speaker is Han Tran. Why don't we have her go, and then we'll get the other one?
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Gotcha, Han. Go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, good evening, Superintendent Tully and distinguished School Board members. Thank you for volunteering your time. My name is Han Tran, as you know, and I am a parent of children who attend the school in the North Shore School District. First, I want to thank Superintendent Tully and the staff for meeting with the representatives from the ACLU that the community pulled together. I hope you will lean on the organization regarding the SRO, Inter-Local Area Agreement. Tonight, I will be reading an anonymous entry from a Woodenville High School student. We're reading it anonymously because they would like to remain that way, for their own safety. This is the entry. "The SROs have always made me uncomfortable. In freshman year 2019-2020, the previous one came into our math class and talked about school shootings. My desk faced the back of the classroom, so the SRO was behind my back. I remember him adjusting his gun, and a jolt of fear went through me. Why should a random man have access to a gun in a school? In junior year 2021-2022, the SRO came into our CRT class and talked about how his taser and his gun were the same shape, and how he kept a rifle in his car. This rifle was seen when the school went on a soft lockdown due to an incident nearby. The incident did not involve violence, yet the SRO went out to his cop car to grab the rifle and brought it into school. Overall, I have never felt comfortable with a glorified cop standing in the school with a gun wearing a bulletproof vest." That's the end of the entry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Han. Now, the name of our next virtual speaker? Leslie. Are you there, Leslie?
Hello?
Hi.
Wonderful, thank you. Leslie, "The unceded lands and waters of the Samamish, 98028. School Board members McGurty, Swain, Cogan, Hayes, and Cast, please do not approve the inter-local agreement to pay for a school resource officer at Woodenville High and Leota Junior High. I'm speaking in solidarity with the students of North Shore School District who are asking for a learning environment where they do not feel threatened by adults in the school, for the students to have a place where they can develop as scholars and as socially responsible community members without being criminalized. A current NSD student let me know, quote, "Honestly, seeing police officers in our school terrifies me. But walking home from school one day, I saw a police officer stop a black student at our school and make the student follow him back towards the school. I've also seen a picture of the police officer at our school posing with a girl who had his weapons vest on her. It was honestly bone-chilling, and I hope to God nothing bad happens to any students in our school, especially since I've seen the police officer put his hand on his gun when students are near him, either to threaten or scare them into staying away," unquote. That is not a positive school and climate. Please do not continue with the SRO program, a program that allows anti-blackness and systems of oppression to promulgate in our schools, a program that allows weapons in our schools, a program that both seeks to punish our students and deputize them into exercising power through weaponry and violence. I look forward to the School Board making a data-informed decision. SROs are known not to prevent gun violence. There is a risk in continuing this program. Police officer presence in schools does lead to higher rates of suspension and more missed school days. I look forward to the Board providing funding for safe, respectful environments for learning and work, providing teachers with the means to support students instead of resorting to criminalization. I look forward to NSD starting the school year by taking action on the, quote, "duty to cultivate necessary conditions for just and equitable change in our education system and community," unquote. We can create schools where students can learn to collaborate and work through conflict with care. Please remove SROs from all our schools. Please vote against Resolution 853, the ILA for SROs at Woodenville and Leota. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, do we have any Association leaders who wanted to provide updates? Okay. From the list of sign-up here, Speaker Number One, if you could come up, please, and introduce yourself, please, before making your comments.
Can you hear me okay? My name is Maria Harwell. I live in the city of Woodenville. My pronouns are she/her. I call on the Board to reject the renewal of the inter-local agreement for SRO services in the city of Woodenville, and to put these funds toward non-police resources for Woodenville students. The evidence and testimony in favor of changing policy here is overwhelming. First, let's start big with testimony from California, and then get closer and closer in until we get to the local with the small city of Woodenville. The ACLU published a report about school resource officers almost exactly one year ago. Today, the American Civil Liberties Union Foundations in California, and ACLU California Action, release a comprehensive report showing that despite school districts pouring millions of dollars into campus police programs, there is little to no credible evidence that they increase school safety, and instead undermine school climate and criminalize students. The Right to Breathe Committee, founded in 2020 by Black organizers on the East Side to track the progress of East Side cities in achieving true racial justice, they called to defund school resource officers, no armed police in schools, reallocate funds to school counselors and mental health support. East Side for Black Lives, a grassroots organization of BIPOC students in partnership with Educators for Justice in Bellevue, and the Black Student Union members at Interlake, Samamish, Bellevue, and Newport, made the following demand of the city of Bellevue. "We demand that the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue School District make a commitment to hiring more Black educators, ending the relationship between the Bellevue Police Department and School District, and reconstructing a more inclusive history curriculum." A local activist group called Bothell Solidarity found some eye-opening statistics about students at Woodenville High School. Black students make up only 1% of Woodenville High School's enrollment, compared to white students making up over 70%. Yet, the amount of days of instruction time lost by those handful of Black students due to out-of-school suspensions is more than all of the amount of days of instruction time lost by all the white students due to out-of-school suspensions at WHS. These Black students are being disproportionately targeted by North Shore School District's school officers, whether you're willing to admit it or not. This is an officer who, according to Woodenville administrators and parents, is a great guy, who has been doing a great job. If you think Black Lives Matter, you will vote to end the SRO contract in Woodenville. If you vote to continue the SRO contract in Woodenville, even if it's just for one more year while we get this figured out, you don't believe Black Lives Matter, not enough, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Speaker Number Two.
Hi, my name is Tariq Scott. I'm a Legislative Associate with the League of Education Voters, and I also ask that you vote to end the SRO contract with Woodenville. Just want to present some data as well. There's actually a tool to find out if all students are being suspended equally around data. If you go to discriminology.org-report-cards, you can see that on average, oh, you have to, if you search for Woodenville High School, on the average, Black students lose 53 days of instruction time due to out-of-school suspensions at Woodenville High School. For Black boys, 71 days; for white boys, for days lost, 71 days for Black boys, 37 days lost for white boys, and 25 days lost for white girls. This data is from 2017, but still pretty alarming. Also, how likely are Black students to be given an out-of-school suspension at Woodenville High School? Seven times, Black students are seven times more than white students overall. Black boys are 14 times more likely than white boys. This is cited from the ACLU of Washington. "The very presence of SROs blurs the line between criminal and youth behavior is often assumed high arrest rates in schools are the result of student criminal activity. However, data shows students are often arrested for non-serious issues, including bad rage, tardiness, disorderly conduct like cursing, disrupting school during obnoxious behavior like fake blurping or using fart spray, criticizing a school police officer or not following directions. These actions, while likely frustrating and distracting, are typical juvenile behaviors that, behaviors that should end with a reprimand or a phone call. However, in schools with SROs, these youth behaviors are criminalized. The impact of being constantly observed and judged makes it more difficult for youth to feel safe. It should be no surprise that exposure to this kind of treatment leaves students feeling alienated from their schools and distrust of adults creating a school setting that no longer feels safe." Thank you.
Thank you, Tariq. Speaker Number Three, please.
Hi, my name is Jim Cozy. I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Wellington Elementary and a sixth grader entering Leota. I'm also here to urge you to not renew the agreement with the Woodenville Police Department and to discontinue placing SROs in our district schools. The school district's mission for racial and educational justice calls out a few different phrases, that the district is committed to supporting and sustaining an educational community that's inclusive, diverse, and equitable, that it will eliminate barriers as we strive for educational equity for all student groups, and that will address the detrimental effects towards excluded and oppressed groups. Unfortunately, school resource officers, placing police officers in our schools, undermine these explicit commitments. We've heard some data already from around the country, as well as from Woodenville High School, that shows that policing in our schools criminalizes youth behavior, driving them into the criminal justice system rather than effectively serving them or our schools, and do so by disproportionately targeting students of color, neurodiverse students, and students with disabilities. These provide barriers with violent intervention and threats of violent intervention that impact our students' ability to receive an education. We've just heard about how the school resource officer program at Woodenville High School dramatically disproportionately targets Black students. We know that around the country as well, that budget spent on school resource officers can be more effectively applied to provide services like mental health services, counseling, educator training, for all children of all backgrounds, without the threatening presence of armed police officers and all of the negative impacts that come with them. And none of the services that SROs do provide effectively, that you do hear positive testimony about from parents and students who do like the SRO in Woodenville High School, require or benefit the use of an armed police officer to deliver them. It's also clear that from recent horrible tragedies in schools around the country, that police presence does not protect our students from gun violence or other violence. It's time to end the use of SROs in all schools, as well as in North Shore schools. I call on you to reject renewal of the agreement with the Woodenville Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Speaker Number Four, please.
Good evening. My name's David Dorian. I'm a resident in Kenmore, and I have children at Kenmore Elementary. It was nice to see you at Community Serve Day yesterday, Superintendent Tully. I'm also here to speak about the SRO contract. You know my position on the contract, so sharing more that I understand it is a very difficult decision to make, and appreciating that you've all been willing to engage in very robust discussion around this topic, because I think it merits it. I think what I would want to frame up is that I think there are good intentions on both sides. We heard at the Woodenville City Council meeting, the Chief, Chief Myers, speak very passionately about the good intentions that are there. I think what we would want to think about as the conversation continues to move forward is the evidence basis for suggesting that good intentions are not enough. I think we do have a really strong analogy here in the past with the DARE program. It seemed like a great idea to have an academically-backed program that police officers would then deliver in classrooms, and of course, that seemed like that would have the right effect in terms of combating the misuse of drugs and alcohol. But actually, when the data was looked at, that wasn't the case. It was almost the opposite. There were several communities where there was no impact, but several where there was actually the opposite impact that you would expect, that DARE program was leading to increases in misuse of drugs and alcohol. And I think we've got similar amount of evidence about SRO programs now. The intention was great to put police officers in school, to have community policing, to build the sense of community and have a police officer be at the center of that. Great idea, along with the idea that they could provide security as well. But the data over many years now, I mean, we're not talking a few years. We're talking many years nationally in all sorts of different communities, some comparable, some not, just doesn't back up that it is a positive impact in the way that even police officers would want to be. The sorts of things that Chief Myers was talking about unfortunately aren't backed up by the data that that's what SRO programs lead to. So we would just really hope that you're able to continue to have this robust discussion, not just about Woodenville, but obviously about Bothell when that discussion comes up as well, and understanding that that might be pivoted through the task force, and hoping that the task force can have that view, because there's also the sense of Washington state law, that there's definitely new policies around that that were meant to be in place actually last school year. So there's definitely things that need to be addressed there with a task force, with robustness. I know there's been, members of that task force had to leave as well, leave the area, in fact, so there may be some need to reconvene and think about new membership there as well, I would suggest. Thank you again for taking the time to discuss this issue. I really appreciate your engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Speaker Number Five.
Distinguished School Board members, thank you for the time and opportunity to address each day. My name is Amelie Frye, and I am a senior at Woodenville High School. And since the summer before my junior year, I have served on the SRO task force, examining data, considering the perspectives of parents and staff on the task force, and most importantly, listening to and representing the voices of students. At school, I have witnessed the intimidation and damage that the SRO program has caused firsthand. The impact of this program is reflected in the numbers, as well as in the experiences of students. Only 1.1% of the student body is Black, compared to the 71.5% of students who are white. Yet, according to the data found on the Discriminology database, at Woodenville High School alone, Black male students are 14 times more likely than white male students to receive an out-of-school suspension. With the most impacted students being the minority, no general poll or self-selecting opportunities will reflect the extent of the SRO program's negative impact on students. In an attempt to highlight the voices of those most affected, I created an anonymous forum for North Shore students to share their feelings. One student stated that they feel that SROs are unnecessary in North Shore, and that they amplify the fear in many students such as themselves. Another student wrote that the presence of an SRO has never made them feel safer at Woodenville High School. They shared that they feel that SROs could be replaced by better resources that are more focused on preventative measures and helping individuals. Another student shared that they feel so intimidated and uncomfortable in the presence of an SRO that they can't look them in the eye. I have heard the experiences and perspectives of many students at Woodenville High School. But even if that number of students who felt that way was only one, are we going to ignore that one student just because they are in the minority? Beyond just the effects of having SROs in our schools, it is important to examine the root of this program. SROs were implemented with the intention of making North Shore schools safer. But when we look at crime rates in Woodenville, there were 280 crimes reported in the city in 2019, 96% of which were property crimes. And crime rates have only continued to drop since then. The level of crime happening within Woodenville High School does not call for the constant presence of an armed police officer. I believe that an alternative, more removed approach to campus security would not only be a more reasonable response to Woodenville High School's level of crime, but would allow all students to feel safe and comfortable at school. You'll notice that I am the only student addressing you tonight. It's likely because while many students care about this issue, they feel unwelcome in these spaces, and as though their efforts won't make a difference. Please prioritize the experiences of students most affected and vote "no" to renewing the contract with the Woodenville Police Department.
Thank you, Amelie. Speaker Number Six.
Good evening, Superintendent Tully and North Shore School Board Directors. My name is Roxiana Gomez, and I am the Youth Policy Manager at the ACLU of Washington, an organization you've heard about a couple of times this evening. I am here to comment on the renewal of the inter-local agreement, which is scheduled for a vote this evening. Many students, parents, and interested groups have showed up this evening to express their opposition to the renewal of the contract. I'm not here to tell you how to vote, but rather to share the facts about what the research on school resource officers show. Plainly put, the presence of police in schools have shown to have a long-lasting negative impact on students. It can lead to increased rates of student arrests and exclusionary punishments, such as suspensions and expulsions, particularly on Black and Brown children and children with disabilities, which end up perpetuating the school-to-prison pipeline. Frankly, with the time I have left, I don't have enough time to explain to you what the school-to-prison pipeline does to young, Black and Brown children. Police in school do very little to prevent and stop school shootings, and given their positional authority, are not the most appropriate stewards of social and emotional well-being on campus. Now that you have the facts on police in schools, is it still worth it? My intent here is not to dismiss student safety, but rather to elevate the professions of people who actually promote safety and a sense of belonging for your students. School districts should be investing in counselors, psych... School districts should be investing in counselors, psychologists, nurses, and social workers to provide support to youth, not police. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanna. That was all of the people who had signed up for public comment, so thank you all. Okay, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any comments, questions about the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, then I call for a vote.
It's all right. Not to worry.
And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. Thank you. Next up on the agenda are action items, first of which is Resolution Number 853, City of Woodinville Interlocal for SRO Services. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. As you know, North Shore School District and the City of Woodinville have historically partnered each year to assign a school resource officer to Woodinville High School to improve school safety and support positive school climate through the SRO program. However, as a result of concerns expressed about the SRO program, North Shore School District did form a task force to establish, and was established to review the current role of the SRO and the goals of the program, make recommendations for redefining the SRO program, incorporate community voice into pertaining to all aspects of the program, define accountability measures, recommend ways to improve transparency, and then to continue to monitor assessment of the redefined role. However, that task force did not complete its work, and ultimately made a recommendation to continue the SRO programs at both Woodinville High School and Bothell High School, and explore other options for the Inglemore and North Creek High School campuses. And at this time, we would continue to follow through with that recommendation from the SRO task force. We've also, of course, planned to add, and we have moved forward with adding additional campus supervisors to both the North Creek and Inglemore High School campuses. Additionally, the task force would continue through the 2223 school year with a broader conversation based on actually my interaction and conversations with some members of the community to take a more broad look at school safety, wellness for students. And so, it'll be a broader conversation, and we would develop a charter under that. But as you know, this item first came to the board on August 8th, and at that meeting, it was requested that we go ahead, and it was tabled until today, to allow the school board members to gather additional information. So, I've worked with staff to answer all the questions that were provided or asked by the school board members on August 8th, as well as additional information as it relates to the task force work, as well as conversations with Chief Myers and others. So, at this time, we are still recommending to follow through on what came from the task force was to continue the SRO program for both Woodinville High School, specifically for this Resolution 853 authorizing interlocal agreement between the City of Woodinville and North Shore School District.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Tully. Not to mince words, this has been a really hard one. I think all of us here have struggled with conflicting feelings about the programs, as well as the input that we've gotten, and we have spent the last two weeks studying every piece of data that could be collected from all of our schools' programs, as well as others, studying the contracts, studying what has been in place in the past. And it is still a very difficult decision to make. I think what I will do is open it to comments and questions from my colleagues before I continue. Does anyone, would anyone like to comment on Resolution 853? Don't jump.
I always, you know, a practice I have of myself is ensuring that when I'm on the dais, I'm contributing to a conversation and moving the conversation forward. So, I don't want to just sit here and expound. So, I'll start with this. Superintendent Tully, we, as a board, gave quite a long list of information requests two weeks ago, and I'd like to thank you and staff and the City of Woodinville for helping comply. There wasn't a single one that wasn't fulfilled, and it was a lot of work to pull it together. And in fact, what happened is, we were able to get data on the work of the SROs within Bothell and Woodinville, which is information we'd been looking for a couple years, actually. So, thank you very much for helping us to get that information. It was very helpful in order to take a look at this contract. You know, in addition, this work is, this resolution is not in a vacuum. There's other work going on in the district right now that tangentially relates to this. And so, there's one thing I'm going to tie in. Around July 1st, I think it was actually July 1st, you forwarded to us a list of key performance indicators relating to the update of metrics of the strategic plan. And so, for everyone's benefit, we had a strategic plan launched in 2017 that was to go five years, and so, for the last year with community input, the board updated the metrics for the strategic plan goals in order to keep work progressing, perhaps dropping metrics that weren't moving the work along, as well as adding some. And so, there's one specifically I just wanted to ask you about, because it's relevant to this. So, under Goal 2, which is, every student will feel safe as a responsible and persistent learner, open to and accepting of diverse cultures and perspectives, one of the measures that the board updated, it now reads, "Increased percentage of students reporting a perception of safety, fairness, inclusiveness, and supports for emotional, behavioral, mental, and physical health." So, as part of your work, working with the cabinet and pulling together, work on that, the first metric in there is a new SEL screener, a new social-emotional learning screener. It says, "Needs to be implemented in fall of 2022," and the data from this will help replace what had been individual climate surveys across the district, helping us to pull together a measurement tool that's consistent across the district. And the reason why I'm asking about this is that within our policies, within the student learning environment, Superintendent Parameter, we do have a requirement that each student feels safe in our district, and here we go. Now, there is the introduction of a way of measuring that, right, which is something we'd like to see. So, I'm wondering, just to start with a question, the new SEL screener, I know August is an incredibly busy time getting ready for back-to-school, but do you have any information? And I apologize that if you don't have it top of mind, that's totally fine. But in terms of having a consistent SEL screener across the district, has the staff had any ability to work on that yet?
Actually, we began looking at different instruments prior to the COVID pandemic, and a lot of that work was put on pause, of course. We have been gathering information as to what are the available tools out there, but no, we have not moved forward with actually putting out an RFP and/or actually producing a contract to implement that yet. But that is the intent, is to have an SEL screener beginning, and actually implement the screening two to three times a year, so that we can track the progress. As indicated by that information you're referring to, we were trying to identify what are the leading indicators of the work throughout the year, and that would be a tool to allow us to do that. As you may be aware, we, over the last couple of years, as we reported on Goal 2, we have not had the availability of ready data to share. One of the main data points that we've used in the past was the Healthy Use Survey, but that was paused as well. Healthy Use Survey actually asked those type of questions, and we were able to implement that this past year. So, we do have that type of information, but it's, again, not an annual review, and we can only make some assumptions. But this SEL tool will allow us to have something ongoing throughout the year. So, I'm looking forward to being able to put that in place and then report to the board.
Thank you. So appreciated. Obviously, there's a lot that plays into the question that's in front of the board right now. Just one other point, and then I'll let my colleagues present any other questions as well. I also looked up, the OSPI tracks both expulsion information and discipline data, which I believe perhaps the data cited today by the folks who were so kind enough to give public comment today, was pulled from the latest data, full set of data that's on the OSPI website, actually, is from 2018-19, which is what shows a very significant reduction in the amount of expulsion days. In 2016-17, our former Superintendent Dr. Reed had instituted a large change in working with everyone within the district of disciplinary practices, and there's quite a change. In 2019-20, the only data that was submitted to OSPI because of the pandemic is for eighth grade only, so unfortunately, that data isn't any help. But in 2018-19, there was a significant improvement, and my perusal of like-sized districts in the state, by going through the OSPI website, we were able to make significant gains that I wasn't able to see in other like-sized districts. So, just from a data gathering standpoint, I thought that might be helpful.
Thank you, Director Cast. Other questions?
A quick question. Superintendent Tully, we talked about, you mentioned just a minute ago, about security officers at Inglemore and North Creek, right, of some kind of security, putting into play campus security.
Campus supervisor.
Could you just explain what that's going to look like, and who those people are?
They're not security individuals, or they are individuals to help interact with students and monitor, say, the parking lot, and provide supports as needed to students and staff. They are not security individuals specifically.
Thanks for clarifying that. And they'll be starting this fall?
Yeah, well, actually, we have had campus supervisors assigned to each of our high schools for a number of years, and typically, there is one assigned to each of the four high schools. For Inglemore and for North Creek, we're assigning a second.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Because they do not have an SRO.
Understood. Thank you.
I'll go next. I don't really have a whole lot of questions. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with Chief Myers and for sending information multiple ways this past few weeks, Superintendent Tully. I think when I look at this, where we find ourselves tonight, as we establish a task force, and the comment was made to look at SRO concerns, and so, I recognize that there are concerns. Folks have written to us, emailed us, and spoken here tonight with concerns. There are studies that elicit concerns as well. So, I have that concern. I also looked at this from a district systemic point of view, and right now, we have a situation where we've got an SRO contract at Bothell High School, this vote tonight at Woodinville High School, we have the school liaison officers at North Creek and at Inglemore High School. We don't have, we have a dean of students at SAS, and no extra support that I'm aware of at Innovation Lab High School. And so, I think about this, and I look at our partners, our community partners. We've got a contract tonight for the City of Woodinville, contract with the City of Bothell, there was in the past one with the City of Kenmore, and also the Snohomish County Sheriff. Also, we have North Shore School District. And so, these entities are coming together to talk about parameters, metrics, goals, and how we're doing. And I think when I see that the task force was created, it makes total sense. This is not a system that I think anybody would design actively to have this many different players. And what I see from this arrangement, from a systems point of view, is that our students will have a different experience depending, you know, on where they go to middle or high school, and possibly different outcomes. And so, as a system, I feel like this is not optimized. And so, for me, this feels more of a discussion of, the program is going to change, and then it becomes a question of when, to me, not if. I doubt that the school, the task force, SRO task force, would come back and say, "The model that we have existing is really optimized, and we want to continue moving forward." I could be wrong, but I just, it feels like it's too cumbersome. So, for me, this really comes down to, what is the need in our schools, and what is the best resource to accommodate that need? And I asked questions at the last meeting, is a trained police officer with a badge and a weapon, you know, the right skill set for the need? And we were fortunate to get some data back from Woodinville High School and Bothell High School of a lot of the interactions, and it was eye-opening to see the kind of work that these folks in our security department are doing to support the principals and the other students, all kinds of issues coming up. But what really wasn't jumping out was school violence. It was more vandalism, people in the hallways, a variety of issues, for sure, that was disrupting learning, but it didn't come down to a violent environment. We heard from students tonight saying that these police officers don't make them feel any more safe. And so, for me, this feels like a question of, what is the need? What is the best resource? And I think that because we have a safety and security department in the district, that's a great place to start thinking about how to answer these questions and have the ability to control the outcomes more as a system versus having so many different moving parts. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cogan. Director Hayes?
Yeah, I've been very intently listening. You know, first, I guess I just want to start with, this cannot and will not be the end of the conversation, whatever happens with the vote, that we are at the beginning of this, and there's so much more to learn and understand about this. So, I'm trying to stay in our swim lane, which, you know, is not a strength of mine. But we do have this parameter that we evaluate, specifically the superintendent, but the district as a whole, the student learning environment, it's P7, for those of you that are so inclined to check it out. And we do say in it that we will, the district will protect against unsafe conditions, behaviors or actions, including the existence, and I'm leaving out some words, they do not change the meeting, including the existence of a school environment or culture that may cause any student to feel unsafe. And that, there's so much to unpack there. As I've spoken with our own students of color within our district, our staff members of color, school members of color around the state, there isn't a clear answer. There is no perfect solution to this. This is complicated. We also have, in this parameter, the avoidance of any actions that may contribute to what is known as the school-to-prison pipeline, and we've added both of those, the students feeling safe and the school-to-prison pipeline components in the summer of 2020, and then didn't have kids in the school buildings there for a year. So, it's been a struggle to get the data. To Director Cast's point, the data was in the process of changing, but it's quite a few years old, and so, it's a challenge to know what the right next step is, because we don't have the data that we need from within our own district of what's working and what's not working. And I worry that when we come to do the monitoring report for P7, and I believe it's in January, that it's going to be a challenge for us to find in compliance with what we're hearing right now. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Lots of good thoughts. Thank you all. I have a couple of- I have a couple of questions to start with and then, then some comments. First of all, the, with respect to the expulsion data that was presented here tonight and that we have seen, expulsion itself is not a decision made by an SRO. I'm wondering if we have a sort of disaggregation of that information with respect to whether that is a standard administrative disciplinary action that resulted in these expulsions as opposed to interaction with an SRO?
Yes, actually that, any type of suspension expulsion is actually a school administrative function, not an SRO function at all. And in fact, what we have learned over the last couple of weeks when looking at some information provided by the Chief Myers and looking at the state law and regulations, there is a, an expectation that we separate the two, that SROs should not be involved in any type of administrative functions like student discipline.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay. Give me a second. Then as a reminder, what, what we're voting on tonight is a resolution by which we grant the superintendent authority to initiate or approve an ILA with the city of Woodinville, which would provide the SRO.
Correct.
So we're not actually approving the contract itself so much as giving Superintendent Tully the authority. One of the things that has been brought up in all of our conversations over the last couple of weeks is that the current contract ends on August 31st. And so if this is not renewed, there is not a, a person in that position to serve Woodinville High School. But we've also been getting additional supervisors at some of our other high schools. I'm wondering if there's a possibility of replacing an SRO with a supervisor at Woodinville High School if that's what happens with the vote.
Yes, that's a model that we're moving forward with, of course, as I mentioned, at North Creek High School and Inglemore, and we would probably move in that direction for Woodinville as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. I have a few other things. Do you have a question you want to jump in on?
This is, this is, it's a tough one. It's not a tough one at the same time. It's, we've been, this has been put before us as a budget item to vote on something that we always have. But just doing the same thing over and over again isn't always the right answer. I'm torn on this one because on one hand, we had a task force that was given some direction, but not full carte blanche to discuss the issue. I mean, the issue on the table wasn't should we have SROs or should we not have SROs or have something else? And I don't, I don't think it was fair to the task force to not give them a little bit more open conversation because if we, now we have to start all over again. So on one hand, I see that as a process issue. Personally, I don't see any defense of having SROs in schools. I've never seen any information in our district that requires policing in the schools. Captain Myers was very eloquent and very fair with his analysis of the Woodinville program, but even he said at the council meeting, talked about the real responses the SROs had that were related to policing. You know, even he had a hard time saying, well, we couldn't, that, those things would have been, he said those things would have been taken care of anyway with a call to the police department. It's convenient that they were there, but for the 85, 87% of all other responsibilities and activities, they're not necessarily needed by a police officer. My other, my other vision on this is that, you know, it's, we haven't really heard from the community, which has always been perplexing to me at some level, because as we discussed, the city of Kenmore just cut funding without talking to us about it for SROs and the same basically thing happened in Snohomish County is from what I understand. And we didn't really hear anything from the public about where is my SRO? So it's, it's as a board and you're supposed to make, help make, the public's input is to help us make decisions for the community. And it's been, it hasn't been there really, although we understand the, both the debate on both sides of the issue. It's just, so on one hand, I feel like, well, yeah, maybe we should continue the conversation before we make a discussion or before we make a decision and have more of a broader discussion with the community, hear from more students, hear from more staff and parents where it really matters and look at the data. At the same time, I have a, a hard time with my, I can't personally justify the position at the same time. And then it goes back to the, we have all, we have basically, you know, three or four different approaches to this and why is that? And do we really need to talk about it anymore? So if that makes any sense, my brain is all over the place on this. Anyway, that's all I've got to say on it at this point.
Thank you, Director Swain. I think we're all there with you. Our brains exploding with all the information. Well, I have to agree with all of my, my colleagues. Just a couple of comments upfront, just to make it very clear that this, this conversation is not about Officer Dodge or the SRO who came before him. It's not about Chief Meyer or the Woodinville Police Department. They've done a great job. They've had a very positive relationship on the whole, according to input from, from Woodinville High School. It's not about them. It is about SROs in general, the, whether or not we have the need for an SRO at Woodinville High School at this point or going forward. And I have to agree with the information that we've been given about the interactions between students and the SROs at both Bothell and Woodinville. It begs the question of whether a unarmed police officer is necessary for all of those interactions. And certainly it doesn't seem like very many of them. A few things that I feel we need to do going forward is have the task force reconvene and continue that work. I think we need, since we have discovered the Bothell High School SRO contract as well, that I think needs to be brought up again and perhaps revisited and/or amended, depending on how we, how we feel about that one. My, for me, the bottom line, it's, it's hard to tell. You want to make sure that all of our students feel safe. We know that there are a lot of parents who feel that their children are more safe with a police officer on campus. But if there is only one student who is negatively impacted or injured, one student who, whose ability to study and be educated is negatively impacted by the presence of, of an armed individual on campus, then that is one too many. And I think I will leave it there. If we have any other comments or questions?
President McGurty, I'd like to just share another thought too, and that is my deep respect for public servants, whether they're teachers, police officers or firefighters. These people are putting their, their jobs and their lives on the line to support the community. So I very much respect that. But I do acknowledge that things are best when they're really optimized. And I looked at the Bothell City website and they've got a change that they've made to their police force with the Navigator program. That's to support community members in mental health crisis, having people with the right skillset to, to help with those citizens in a more effective way than burdening a trained police officer who has a different skillset perhaps. And it's just, it's, it's good leadership to kind of put the right people and set them up for success. And I think that when I think of the SRO model, I think, I don't want to speak for anybody, but my suspicion is that there's a sense that you're a police officer first. You've got your, your, your weapons and your uniform and you're always on call. Part of the contract says, if there's an emergency in the community, you're racing to support that. You're going to leave the school and support the community, which is as it should be. But I think that maybe the, the model isn't helpful because really these officers should be school resources first and foremost. Police officers, yes, by training. And maybe if you need to go off campus and grab your, your badge and your jacket and your weapon to support the community, that's fine. But I just wonder if putting folks as police officers in a school has them really focused on being school resources versus police officers? And so I think they may be set up for more challenging work. When I looked at all the work that was described in the task force SRO description, it was all about supporting students and their safety and security and creating a safe environment. And again, I just don't think that the, the approach was, maybe is ideally defined.
Do you mind if I do a little bit more? Go ahead.
Just one more. Just in the, the forward thinking, after the Parkland shooting, one of our staff members shared a video that was made around, I'm not particularly wild about neurodivergent because I have no idea what neurotypical means, because I've never seen that, but anyway, about neurodivergent students in the situation. And I'm hopeful that as we go forward of this work of whatever, because let's face it, students are delightfully human beings and there will always be a need for campus security. Thank you, TikTok. So having whatever that looks like, that there's training around neurodivergent students and how to interact in situations that we focused a lot on students of color and that's valid, but there is also a huge issue with some of our behavior students and their interactions. And that, that's part of the conversation going forward is what's the best way to, again, make sure that they're feeling safe on campus.
Lovely. Thank you, Director Hayes. And since I had previously just asked questions before, you know, thoughts around this as well, you know, something that we try to do as leadership of the district is approach questions such as this with honesty and humility, right? And it's been said, you know, if, if, if things aren't working well, let's be honest about it and retool it. You know, it's, it's difficult in that, or at this point of time and due to, due to how the 2021, 2022 school year unfolded, the task force had to be paused, right? And so there's a, a lot of important work that wasn't done. And Superintendent Tully, two, two weeks ago, you mentioned the idea of expanding this, well, in, in one way clarifying the scope as well as expanding it because it's, you know, the proper conversation is how do we, how do we create a structure that supports these wonderfully 23,000 humans that come through our district that are going to make mistakes and how do, how do we support it? That's not the conversation we've had. And I think the conversation everyone here and all six of us have, have talked about needing to have. And, and my observation is that we are lucky to be in a community that we have incredible partnerships with our municipalities. You know, speaking with whether it be city council members of, of all our cities, whether it be public service staff, everyone admits the need for a, a community policing kind of model. And I don't know if that's even the right term because that's not my background, but the idea that, you know, if, as Director Cogan has says, has said a few times, you know, let's, let's match the program to the need, right? And if we don't have a match, we don't have a match. But luckily we're blessed with these partners that will, will help us figure that out. You know, because the fact of the matter is, I don't think at the end of the day, why, I think why this conversation is hard for us when it comes in front of us because it's not just about the structure of, of policing, it's about our schools and how our staff interacts with students and what's happened over time is the SRO becomes ingrained in, in the school and ends up just by force of human nature and someone wanting to help taking on duties of staff. And that's, that's when it could be tricky. You know, I, I used an example, what about graffiti? You know, I, I may or may not have been the parent of a child who engaged in graffiti at the middle school level, right? You know, but that is also a criminal offense, you know? And so how, how, how is, we seem to have evidence that we need to talk about, you know, how do we make sure these silos are either kept silos or we have a different model? Because right now it, the, the model that exists today requires really strict silos and we just don't seem to have that. So thank you for letting me expound.
I would just, I would just add too, it was what you folks reflected that regardless of the vote, the work needs to be done to decide what, what's our uniform for the most part planned for all of our schools that we find need some kind of supervision, right? It's not different here and there. And, you know, we, we could have an instance where one school needs a different set of, you know, resources as another, but, you know, that doesn't really stand out to me that I've seen. But anyway, I hope that, I hope the conversation continues because we do need to have a thoroughly and purposely thought through policy on this.
Thank you. And I, I agree completely. The work definitely has to continue. And it would be nice that we have the same approach at all of our schools so that the experience of our students doesn't depend upon which, which high school they attend. I, thank you again to all my colleagues for your comments. I, I agree that we have a, a current SRO model that I think doesn't necessarily fit the situation anymore. And the work of the task force and the work that we need to do going forward is to determine what will work best for our students, what is the need for our students and, and try to go to that point for, for all of our students. I do want to take another moment and thank Superintendent Tully and your staff for all the work that you did to provide all the answers to our questions and all the data that you provided. It was, it was huge. You guys just stacks, stacks of paper if it was, if it was all printed out. And also to Chief Myers, he went out of his way to meet with us and respond to our questions and provide us as much information as he could. And, and, you know, for the, the SROs too, they have, I believe, operated with, with good intent and with good hearts, trying to accommodate the students for their safety and, and per the intention of, of the board and the district with respect to, to how we've been approaching this in the past. I think that's it for me. Any other comments or questions about the resolution? Okay. That being the case, do I hear a motion to either pass or pass on the resolution 853?
I think what's in front of us is the resolution. Then we'll vote. So I move to approve.
Okay. Then I call for the vote.
And, and just while we're voting, because I know there's lots of attention, the, anytime I was on my phone, it was addressing the child at home wanting to know what was for dinner. So just to be transparent. Oh crap, wait. Not talking, clicking. Turned off. Thank God for that chain vote thing.
And the board has decided to not approve resolution 853 unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, next on the agenda, resolution 854, authorization of school district agents for state financial assistance for capital projects. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGurty. The Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction requires a list of district personnel who are authorized to sign documents required by the state for projects approved for state financial assistance. The attached resolution 854 provides this list of individuals that include the board president. The attached resolution eight, five, four provides this list of individuals that include the board president, the board vice president, myself as interim superintendent, deputy superintendent, executive director of capital projects and operations, as well as the director of capital projects. These individuals will have the district's authority authorized, um, as will act as districts authorized agents regarding state funding documentation for the state financial assistance projects for design, construction, closeout during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This would include, uh, North Shore Concert Hall Project as well as other capital projects approved by the state financial assistance. We recommend that the board, um, approve resolution eight, uh, five, four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
President McGurty, recognizing that the authorized agent signature conversation may not be quite as riveting for our audience as our previous conversation, to perhaps let them know that we will not be offended if they choose to leave at this point.
But you are also welcome to stay and listen to our exciting conversations as we go forward with our agenda. But no, I don't have any questions for this topic. Thank you. Seeing no questions or comments from the board, um, do I have a motion to approve authorization of?
Moved.
Second. Okay. And I call for a vote.
Okay, again, focusing on what I'm doing.
And that resolution eight, five, four is approved by unanimous vote. Thank you. Next action item, donation to North Creek High School Marching Band. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGurty. Um, as you know, we have school board policy that specifies that any gift to the district or to individual school or department of money, materials and equipment, having a value of $10,000 or greater, must be submitted to the board for approval. This action item is a donation from S and M Investments LLC to North, North Creek High School Marching Band in the amount of $15,000. Funds are requested by the donor to be used for the North Creek High School Marching Band's trip to Hawaii in December. We recommend approval of this donation of $15,000 to the North Creek High School Marching Band.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
You know, after all the donations for various sporting events, it's kind of fun to see one for the arts.
Agreed.
Hey, do I hear a motion to approve the donation to North Creek High School Marching Band?
So moved.
Second. And I call for a vote. And that is approved unanimously. Next on the agenda is information items, project acceptance under $1 million. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGurty. This, um, agenda item is to inform the school board of a camera modernization project that was completed at Woodmore Elementary School. The, the final contract amount was $57,390. That's, yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I love, love the progress.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Next is the superintendent search. And some of you may know that prior to our meeting tonight, we had a retreat. It was the retreat. Yes. We've had quite a few meetings today. A retreat, uh, in which we started our discussion of the rebooting of the superintendent search for the coming year. Just to recap a little bit, uh, let's see. We discussed, um, putting out an RFP, request for proposal, if that's the correct form that we need to do, uh, to start looking for a recruiting firm. As you know, we, we had hired, um, GR recruiting for the interim search. The, and a full superintendent search is a little bit different from an interim. So we will put the request out to receive proposals from various recruiting firms. Uh, we also talked about, uh, making this a national search as opposed to simply, uh, within Washington state as we did with the interim search. We're also looking at a timeline, hoping to have a, um, recruiting firm identified and brought on board by perhaps mid-September. Have them, uh, no, excuse me. Mid to late October, have them on, have all of the proposals in by mid-September so that we can make that decision by mid to late October. And then we actually have, uh, until May, this time to, uh, get, uh, information, input from the community, which the recruiting firm will, um, assist us with. Identify candidates, interview candidates. We've got all the way until May to, to be able to do that. So we have some time, but we are looking back at the list of groups and organizations that were involved with and gave, provided input and surveyed, if you will, uh, during the superintendent search six years ago. So we're revisiting that and then seeing if there are other groups, uh, or new organizations, new partnerships that we've formed in the community since then. So we'll make sure that everyone is covered and of course, uh, ask for assistance if, if there's, uh, anything in there that we're missing. And I think that about brings us up, of course, we'll be looking for, uh, input from the community on, again, the characteristics of a superintendent as opposed to the interim superintendent, which we, uh, collected last time around. And again, the, uh, recruiting firm that we hire will help us on that. Am I missing something?
Well, two things. One, we're going to look to make sure we get the correct wording.
Yes. Yes, we will.
And follow that. And just to, the timeline, what we're looking for is to have the, whatever correctly it is called, out by mid-September so that we can have a firm in place by the end of October.
Right. Yeah. Exactly, exactly. Okay. So we have rebooted and it will be exciting. Okay. Uh, so that was the discussion on that. Uh, next on the agenda is board reports and communication, first of which is new business. Do we have any new business? Okay.
I actually.
Oh, David.
Yeah. Actually, so given our, our discussion today, I think I would like to see a new business item to discuss the interlocal agreement with the city of Bothell for the SRO at the high school.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes. Yes, I was wondering how we would bring that back, but yes, thank you. Any others? New business? Okay. Next we have board member reports and this time Director Cogan is up first.
Thank you, President McGurty. On Thursday, the 11th of August, I attended the Back to School Resource Fair. It's a wonderful event, uh, with a lot of community participation. I want to thank the North Shore Schools Foundation for organizing and providing the labor for the event and all the community resources that were there, supported our families and our students. And then on the 18th, it was my pleasure to attend the Wall of Honor Ceremony at Poppini. I want to congratulate all the new inductees to the North Shore Wall of Honor. And then this morning I had a lovely time at the new NSD Employee Welcome Event. I think it was a wonderful energy in the room and we've got a lot of fabulous talent that has decided to join our North Shore community and support our students and families. So thank everyone and wish everyone a great school year. And then we also, uh, earlier this evening had a new North Shore School District Administrator meet and greet. And we also had the opportunity to meet some new principals and assistant principals that have come to, uh, work in the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Cogan. Uh, Director Hayes?
Great. Um, I've, uh, continuing to attend national and, um, state meetings with board members from, um, around Washington and around the country. Also attended the wall, a very muggy Wall of Honor event. But as always, so grateful to the members of our community that have brought this work to us and recognizing, um, the contributions not only to North Shore, but, um, our larger community and, uh, state and even world of people that have been part of our district. So, um, it's just, it's an amazing event. I participated in Community Serve Day yesterday at North Shore Middle. And, um, again, thanks to our community partners for helping us put that together. And then, um, many, many new staff things, the staff orientation this morning and the, uh, administrator, new administrators this evening and just, um, again gratitude for them feeling, willing to come work with us and for us and we're, I'm just, I'm loving the energy this year. So excited not to be measuring with a yardstick. Dodge. Yeah. And looking forward to the start of school.
Thank you. Director Hayes, uh, Director Cast?
Thank you, President McGurty. I also love, um, the fact that I had the opportunity this year to attend the Wall of Honor induction ceremony on August 18th. Just one of the, um, pearls in our district, I think of, of the continuity of public service. That's so part of the ethos here. August 21st, I was able to help out on Community Serve Day. Thank you for the 2,000 volunteers. I'm not surprised. I was at Sunrise Elementary and there were about 80 there and that's one of our smaller elementary schools. So I'm not surprised there were 2,000 around. It was an incredible turnout by our wonderful community. Also too, today has been the great day of meeting new employees, but this morning as well as the afternoon. And I'm going to tag on one thing that I probably should have more appropriately categorized under new business reports. But I'm going to send to Peggy to distribute to you all on October 26th. WADA is presenting, um, the introductory course in its, um, educational equity series in Lake Washington. So it'll be right around the corner and, um, it's part of the required educational equity training for school board members. And so since it's all convenient, I want all to let you know before it fills up. So, um, I'll get that information to Peggy and then, um, hopefully it'll work out. So that's October 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Swain?
Yeah, I like to focus my comments on, uh, the meeting I had with Director Cogan and Superintendent Tully, um, with Chief Myers from the Woodinville Police Department on Friday. And I really appreciated, um, just his willingness to sit and meet and to just objectively talk about for the program, what he knows, what he doesn't know, other theories and movements around security in schools around the country. Um, I also, uh, appreciated his comments at the Woodinville City Council meeting. And I wanted to thank the Woodinville City Council too. They, uh, went ahead and passed the interlocal agreement, just in case we, you know, giving it, uh, the approval. And really it was basis, based on, from the comments I've heard online on the, was that, hey, let the North Shore School District Board tell us what they need and we are happy to, to support them. So I really appreciated that. And, um, that was, that was just, uh, a good example of partnerships, not getting bound up into public, the politics of it all and just to have a open and, and discussion and to realize that we, Woodinville City Council has their role, we have our roles and that we can all work together in the end. Thank you.
Well said, Director Swain. Thank you. Yes. Uh, thanks to the Woodinville City Councils as well. I won't belabor, I went to many of the same events that my colleagues did. New welc- new employee welcome today, the Wall of Honor last Thursday and the Back to School Fair on the Thursday prior. So that will be it for me. If there's no other comments, I'm going to gavel before you have a chance. Meeting is adjourned.